Please join in the Pledge of Legions.
Councillor Olson, Fennessy, Bender, Sweeney, McDonald, Missolia, Finsland, Herrick, McKenzie, Brown.
Recognizing the quorum, can seek the approval of amendments from May 21 meeting? Heard the motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 5.1 is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission to vacate a portion of Main Street on Connor's Point.
At this time, I'll call for a public hearing and ask those that wish to speak in favor of to do so now. For the second time, those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. And for the third time, those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. Hearing none, those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. For the second time, those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. And for the final time, those that wish to speak in favor, uh, speak in opposition to may do so now. Hearing is seen and none, I'll call the public hearing to a close and ask the consideration of the council. Heard the motion and second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 5.2 is a public hearing, a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission to vacate a portion of the east-west alley between Winter and Broadway Streets and John and Hewitt Avenues.
At this time, I'll call for a public hearing on this measure and ask those that wish to speak in favor of to do so now. For the second time, those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. And for the third time, those that wish to speak in favor may do so now. Hearing none, those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. And for the final time, those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Hearing is seen none, I ask the pleasure of the council. Heard the motion and second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 5.3 is a public hearing to consider non-renewal of applicants in Part II of the 2013-14 alcohol report. You do have an update at your desk this evening. Applicants A, C, and E are now code compliant and can be approved. Applicant B, which is the Albert Room, they have withdrawn their application, they are not seeking to renew their alcohol license. And D on the corner is, they're currently not in code compliance, they're trying to work out a stormwater sewer issue or delinquent stormwater issue with Superior Water Light and are requesting that they be given it until June 15 to be compliant. So we're recommending to hold their public hearing until the next meeting.
Councillor Olson.
On that issue now, this has to be brought back to the Finance Committee too, are we going to be in the right timeframe if they're going for the stormwater and...
No, I'm, I'm sorry, it wasn't stormwater, it was a sewer billing issue with Superior Water Light.
So the stormwater is...
The stormwater, yeah, it was a sewer issue. In fact, they're not quite sure that they're going to renew, they were going to look at deciding if they were going to renew their alcohol license at this point. So they just asked for a little bit more time to work out Superior Water Light and consider whether to renew or not.
Good, thank you.
There's a motion and second to hold this until further, how much time do they need?
You'd be approving Part A, C, and E of the report. B has been withdrawn and holding the public hearing until the next meeting for on the corner.
So the motion is to approve A...
C and E.
And E, and holding D until...
The June 18 meeting.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, carried.
Item 6 is a consent agenda.
Heard the motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7 is business by department heads. City Clerk Klon, I'm requesting council approval to appoint a technology study group to review the feasibility of moving the city council towards a paperless document distribution system.
Heard the motion and second, discussion. Councillor McKenzie.
Yeah, I'm just curious as how they come to the determination of how this was going to be formed and who was going to be on, on the committee?
I kind of, we're following what Douglas County's group is doing right now and they, they tried to pick county board supervisors that had some really good technology experience and some not-so-good technology experience. So Tom Fennessy is, uses his iPad quite a bit, Bob Finsland, not at all. And Councillor Bender as the council leadership.
Okay, I was just, I hadn't heard anything about that before, so, thanks.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7, I'm sorry. Item 7.2, Assistant Finance Director Zahuski is requesting approval of the animal shelter management contract to Animal Alliance Humane Society for $120,000 per year.
Heard the motion and second, discussion. Councillor Sweeney.
I just have a question as to, this is when it's approved, who is in, who watches over this contract? What department is responsible for the covenants within? Who is responsible to make sure these are fulfilled?
Finance for the, the financial side and Public Works for the management of it. Pardon me? Pardon?
Yeah, it's a team effort.
Team effort.
Yeah, it's a combination. Sometimes we need to contact Public Works if it's a building-related issue and then negotiation of the contract has historically been Attorney Prell and I.
So a follow-up question is then, is there a report given to someone six months into the contract that these provisions are being, or is that strictly a management and it, when it happens, it happens?
The, Gene, you want to handle that?
They give us, they give us financial reports, a budget, what they've done actual financially, and they'll give us statistics on number of animals that have been served at the, at the shelter. And, I mean, actually, these are things that come up all the time in just general discussions with them because we, we meet with them probably at least on a monthly basis.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.3, Public Works Director Getzmann is requesting to award the landfill, landfill cell number five, phase two, construction contract to Integrity Excavating, the amount of $2,645,722.81.
Heard the motion and second to approve. Councillor Olson.
PLA.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Public Works Director Getzmann is requesting to purchase replacement GPS survey equipment from Frontier Precision Inc. for $30,664.
Heard the motion and second to approve. Discussion. Councillor.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Jeff for including all the information. There was a lot of questions I had, but with the additional information he sent with, with his bid information, it helped out a lot, so, thanks for that additional information.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.5, Assistant Public Works Director Janico is requesting to purchase one 2013 John Deere Tract Excavator from Nortrak's Equipment of Ashland, Wisconsin, at the Minnesota Net State Bid Contract Price.
Heard the motion and second to approve. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.6, Assistant Public Works Director Janico is requesting to purchase one 2013 Caterpillar Ribbed Tire excavator from Fabco Equipment of Superior at the Minnesota Net State Bid Contract Price.
Heard the motion and second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.7, Assistant Public Works Director Janico is requesting to award the contract for pavement marking services to Farnor Asphalt Ceiling in the amounts outlined in the document.
Heard the motion and multiple seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 8.1, Mayor Hagan is recommending the following committee appointments. Reappointing Linda Heinz, Linda Heinz and Don Ordeman to Civil Service Commission. Appointing Joe Flaherty to the Mayor's Commission on Disability. Reappointing Gerald Olson and Betty Ranko. And reappointing Gene Rosberg to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Reappointing James Peterson to the Plan Commission. Reappointing Rod Campbell and Andy Leachak to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Superior. And appointing Krista William Clements to the Urban Forestry Tree Board.
Heard the motion and second to approve. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 10.1, Resolution introduced by Councillor Bender requesting the city council support the National Night Out, August, Tuesday, August 6, 2013.
First to approve.
Second.
Heard the motion and second. President Bender.
I would like to take probably 30 seconds just to read this and also make a couple comments in the, the couple comments are that as far as in the 3rd District for, two years ago, three years ago, there were two National Night Out get-togethers. Two years ago, the same, and then last year, there were three National Night Out get-togethers. And I, also, I believe there was one right here in the parking lot last year, so. And it's a very good idea as far as bringing community together. So I will just read this and if this sounds like the one from last year, the dates have been changed. City of Superior does ordain as follows, whereas communities across the United States have designated August 6, 2013, as a National Night Out to celebrate community and neighborhood awareness and unity, and whereas the purpose of the National Night Out is to generate support and participate in local anti-crime efforts to strengthen neighborhood spirit and community and police-community partnerships, to heighten crime and drug prevention awareness, and to send a message to criminals that neighborhoods are fighting back. Whereas various neighborhoods in the City of Superior held National Night Out functions on August 7 of last year, 2012, and some of which were attended by some city councillors, now therefore be it resolved that the Superior City Council wishes to express its support for National Night Out and the goals and purposes behind it. Be it resolved that the Superior City Council hereby expresses its support for the 30th, actually, we forgot the T in front of the H there for the "if," National Night Out on August 6, 2013. It encourages the administration and the various neighborhoods throughout the city to facilitate and participate in the event by spending a night out with their neighbors.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 10.2 is a resolution introduced by the Planning Department, setting a public hearing July 2 in the boardroom of the Government Center to rezone lots in the vicinity of Lambord Avenue and North 57th Street from suburban to R1B one-family residential district.
Heard the motion and second to approve. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
11.1, An Ordinance Introduced by the Public Works Committee Amending the Traffic Code. Limited-time parking, changing two-hour parking be, only between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Birch Avenue West Side from Bellknap Street North for a distance of 150 feet.
Heard the motion and multiple seconds, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
11.2 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee amending the traffic code. No night parking, no parking between 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM by adding Birch Avenue East Side from Bellknap Street North for a distance of 150 feet.
Heard the motion and second, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
11.3 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Committee amending the traffic code. No parking in designated spaces, adding 1810 Missouri Avenue, six feet on either side of the driveway entrance.
Heard the motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
11.4 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Department amending the traffic code. Disabled parking zones by removing 1520 Ogden Avenue.
Heard the motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Any business by the public, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We stand, we stand adjourned. We'll reconvene at five, five minutes and committee of the whole, Mr. President.
Shall I repeat all of that? Okay.
Okay, item one is Mayor Hagan is requesting discussion of the economic viability of the Moccasin Mike landfill.
And we would ask you to hold all questions until presentations are done.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so, the mayor is first.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the council meeting on kind of short notice, I guess, with regard to this matter. We're going to concentrate on the landfill and the waste management operations that we have in the community. The purpose of the presentation is to inform the council of the financial and operational status of the Moccasin Mike landfill, to present and evaluate its non-sustainable future. And then I would like to introduce Bob Larson, professor of Texas State University and solid waste management consultant that we have the pleasure of having here with us tonight. Let me begin by saying that Gene Vito and Public Works and I started discussing the landfill operations at least a year ago in relationship to the contract that we have with WLSSD, the financial status of the, of the landfill, and the possibility of that at that time to move ahead with a different direction with regard to supporting landfill operations. Since that, after that, I had the pleasure of seeing Bob. Bob Larson is an old friend and I used to be the first city planner for the community. And we got talking about this last summer and he indicated to me that if he needs, if we need any assistance in discussion or evaluating the landfill, he'd be very happy to, to offer those services as a former resident of Superior. So with that and moving forward in discussions with Bob and Public Works and Finance throughout the last summer to this point in time, we were planning on bringing this forward to the common council in a more measured manner, a more elongated manner for discussion and evaluation and open dialogue with the public in getting this message out of what we need to do or what the options might be. Unfortunately, about a week and a half, two weeks ago, Joint Finance Committee in Madison is going through the biennial budget for the state of Wisconsin. And as you would expect, there are, I think, 64, I think, 64 amendments added to the biennial budget in addition to amendments of 40-some nature by the governor. One of which is to require, beginning January 1 of 2014, to require the, any municipality of over 5,000 population, I believe, to, if they initiate any fees, the budget, the levy, I should say, would have to be reduced by the like amount that the fees are collected for the purpose of what the fee is instituted for. So this presented a dilemma with regard to getting this message out in more timely, more measured manner for council consideration later this year, maybe even next year. So in essence, we are currently subsidizing the landfill from the general fund to the tune of about $1 million. And the analysis that Finance has completed will show you that that subsidization is going to grow dramatically. And what that means is this. We're going to recommend a fee be established for all operations for purposes of waste management. The reason is, is if we do not, and if the projections hold true, which we believe they will, there will be a crossroads very soon with regard to the revenue achieved or received for the landfill operations from outside sources, WLSSD being the major one, which currently is about three, three and a half million dollars a year, where the revenues will cross-match the cost of operation. Operation costs are going up and revenues are going down. In simple terms, there's already a gap in the ability to fund the landfill without the transfer from the general fund. So it really is not a enterprise system. It is being subsidized, it isn't standing on its own two feet. So with that being said, I'm going to introduce Bob for a minute and then we'll go through the presentation and welcome all discussion opportunities of variation, welcome opportunities of, of options if there are some, and then we'll finalize, I'll finalize at the end with the next steps if the council should so approve and choose. So seated next to me is Robert Larson, PhD, resident of Superior for a lot of years, resident of Texas for the last 40 years, I believe, or so. I've known him for, since I was a kid, I guess, he wasn't as young as me, but, but he is, he's an expert in waste management. He teaches waste management at the university, Texas State University in Austin. He's a consultant on that matter, he has his own consulting firm, and he is an expert in water and waste management, and he can get into the details of that. When I asked Bob to give us just an analysis of what we have, we, Finance and Public Works shipped down to him all the necessary materials, documents, background on the landfill and the operations so he could digest that and bring forward a recommendation. The recommendation and analysis, if you will, the briefing, was delivered to you, I believe, just last week maybe. And it's concise, it's, it's right directly to the point. And I'll let Bob first introduce himself as who he really is, and then he can get into the discussion about the landfill.
Thanks, Bruce. I'm Bob Larson. I was born and raised in Superior. Lived at 617 Grand for a long time, 1116 Hammond for a long time, and then moved out to East End. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in geology and biology from UW Superior. I have a Master's of Science in, I'll tell you, what I want to do is talk about two things. One is a little bit of my credentials and then a real brief review of the report that I wrote. And so kind of set the stage for what we're going to try and do this evening. But anyway, I have a Master of Science in the physical sciences from UW Madison. At that time, when I finished that, I returned to Superior and I worked for the head of the Lakes Council of Governments for a while. And then I went, I taught at UW Superior for three years. And during that time, I had a, what was called a Community Development Institute, and that was where academics and academia could help solve city problems. And so in that vein and doing that, I got to know Charlie Denewith and so on and so forth. And so I was appointed as the first city planner for Superior. That's a long time ago. It's, gosh, in the late 60s or 70s, so, that, that kind of dates me, but that's, that's just what way it is. I did that for three or four years and then decided I was going to go back and finish my PhD, which I did at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. I majored in geography and I had a minor area in civil and in environmental engineering. And that's where I really became exposed to solid waste management. And solid waste management was the love that I, that I had, and I wanted to pursue that as far as a career is concerned. I moved, I had an opportunity to go to Texas. I moved to Texas, Austin, Texas, to teach at Texas State University. When I started there, it was 6,000 students. Currently, it's over 34,000 students. So it's all attributable to my fine teaching, of course. But, so it has grown appreciably, and I have taught solid waste management there for 40 years. I introduced the first course in solid waste management in Texas in 1973, and I did it at the PhD and Master's level in '84. So been around the block a lot of time. I was head of the planning program for the department, director of grants for the university. I was a dean in liberal arts. I'm now currently the director of what's called the Government Partnerships Program. I formalized that in 2003 in consulting using PhD students and master's students and faculty to help solve governmental problems. Solid waste is one of those big issues. I have been a consultant to what is now called the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, actually, since, every year since 1976. I do an awful lot of work with them. I've raised about $11 million in grants and contracts, a lot of that through the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. I did what was called a closed landfill inventory for the state of Texas, and we found 4,200 closed landfills, put them in the GIS system, and the first one that had been done for the state. And I got involved in putting on conferences in solid waste management. I've been a consultant to a lot of major firms. Browning Ferris Industries, now Allied Waste, Texas Disposal Systems, Waste Management, so on and so forth, so, private cities and the private sector. I've been an expert witness in several cases. I'm just going to highlight this. Resource Conservation Recovery Act, which is really the driving force as far as landfills under subtitle D amendments, which had passed in 1993. I've been, was very instrumental in that, in actually writing some of that, changing some of that, and implementing a lot of that throughout the state of Texas. I've written rules, written laws in Texas relating to solid waste management. I was a member of the Municipal Solid Waste Resource Recovery Advisory Council, a whole mouthful. I have my own business called Larson and Associates. We do comprehensive plans for communities. We won the Comprehensive Plan of the Year, which is given out by the Texas AICP, and so that was very good feather in my cap at that time. I'm a member of the Pollution Prevention Advisory Council, which is statutory council to the state, to the state of Texas, to the TCEQ. I'm also an elected official. I was elected as a director for the Barton Springs Edwards Aquifer Conservation District. We regulate water for about 100,000 people. I went through a very severe, difficult, gerrymandered redistricting last fall in an attempt to get rid of me. Well, they didn't get rid of me. And so I was able to overcome that. And so we're in droughts right now, and when I come here, I come here knowing full well what decisions will, can affect, how it can affect you. And we're in an extended drought in Texas, as you probably have heard. We have, I'm responsible in for a 30% curtailment in their water and what they get as far as groundwater is concerned. And it goes 10, 20, 10%, when it gets to a certain level, 20%, it gets to a certain level, 30%, we're at now, and the drought is deepening, so when we get to 40%, I'm going to leave Texas and come back to Superior. Because you folks have a very, very fantastic resource. You pour it in a glass and it's cold and you can drink it, it's fantastic. I have been a full prophet at Texas State for a long period of time. One thing I'm working on now, which is a very interesting, interesting project, since we're out of water, particularly out of groundwater, I'm working on the desalination of brackish water using methane gas from landfills as a fuel source for that, and that's the first one in the country so far. So basically, that... So basically, that's what my credentials are. We, I think I penned, they appended to the little report that I did, the summary that I did. You had a brief summary of my resume. As far as my remarks, I think first and foremost is that how you fund the landfill operations and how you fund your solid waste management services is, and I use the term in there, archaic, and I think that's a strong word, but I used it purposely because it is something that is typically not used any longer. We go to user-based fees and enterprise funds where the system pays for itself, and so that was what I, my recommendation was that you go toward that. And in my recommendation, as far as the general fund transfer, cease that and discontinue that, and go to a fee-based system. And in discussions with Gene Vito, the financial director, and Jeff, we came up with an idea that it should be probably up to $20 per living unit equivalents or household, but that's up to. And one way to soften that a little bit, didn't say it in the report, but, you know, you're going to have the grandmother, the single person, and so on and so forth, that generates far less waste than the family of four, or whatever the case may be. So what you may want to look at when you develop this is to look at the idea of pay-as-you-throw, where you would have graduated fees based on graduated container sizes. And so what I'm saying there is you have, as an example, you can have a 30-gallon container, you can have a 60, or a 60-gallon container, or a 95-gallon container. Each of those would have different prices, but when you meld those all together, the average fee would be something approximating $20 for a household. You have three options that you're really looking at. One is the user fee base. Another option is don't do anything, and we're going to discuss that as we go through the presentation. And the third option is privatization, and, you know, those are options that we'll work through and take a look at. In doing the analysis of the information that was sent to me, I found it quite astonishing that DNR has a environmental and a recycling fee of $13 a ton. The basis of that, I'm not sure, I don't know what the basis of that is, but I find it outlandish in Texas. That same fee is a buck and a quarter. A dollar and a quarter is a heck of a lot less than $13 a ton, and then if you have recycling onsite or adjacent to your site, you get a rebate on that. So that is really a discouraging amount of money to take that right off the top. Regional management, you've already had the foundation in place, because you're always taking the WS, WLSSD wastes, and you're taking regional wastes now. So one thing that you may want to look at is investigate how to do the regional system. Another thing that I looked at was my old alma mater, the University of Wisconsin Superior, and what they pay in terms of their fees toward these solid waste management services. And I'm not saying that they're not paying their fair share, but universities traditionally are cheap, and they don't pay what their fair share is. The same thing would be, you could look at what the Superior Housing Authority is doing and how they're getting, managing their waste, Barker Island, and so on and so forth. Also, I talked a little bit about commercial wastes and the collection of commercial accounts, and I talked about the current landfill operations, and we'll go over that. I think Jeff and his crew, they're doing a very good job over there. It's, all the mandates that come out of Subtitle D, they're fulfilling, and it's a difficult job to do that. Their compaction ratios, rates are very good, excellent, above the industry standards, how they're handling methane, how they're handling their leachate. All those things are very important to make sure you keep your permit and do not lose that permit. So I guess that I've talked too long, I rambled on a bit, but I just wanted to give you a flavor for what I am. And for me, this is, I started my career here, and really, I'm in the end of my career now, so it's, it's a lot of fun for me to come back here. And I think I have a lot of expertise, and it's a way for me to give back to my community. So thank you for letting me come here.
Thank you for being here. I'll ask, I'll ask Gene Vito to make some introductory remarks.
Thanks, Mayor. I apologize, you've got the back of my head, but we're all sitting in the front here because we're kind of tag-teaming this presentation, and, and some slides I'll be covering, some Jeff will be covering, and, and we're hoping that Bob, Dr. Larson, can jump in as needed to help us out with this presentation. And speaking of Bob, I want to thank you for being here, because it's, it's not very often you can say you've got a professional that has 40 years' experience in an area, and especially waste management, so this is, you're an incredibly valuable resource to us, and it's, it's very fortunate that, that you've come in and you can take a look at our landfill and tell us what are some of the good things that we're doing, what are some of the things that aren't so good? And I did appreciate your, your use of the word "archaic" as far as the funding, because that stands out, and that really draws people's attention and makes you really think about the way we're doing things. So very happy to have you here, Bob, and the bulk of my presentation will be later on, where we'll be getting into a lot of details about the finances of the landfill. And so just as a reminder, tonight, what we're focusing on isn't so much the, the operations of the landfill, even though Jeff will be doing his introductory comments on some of the operations, but it's really to focus on how we're funding these operations. And so that's what we'll be getting into. The key issue that we're, we're talking about is the relationship between our general fund and our landfill. And, and what we're talking about being archaic is the fact that this is an enterprise fund, our landfill, and yet we're subsidizing it partially through our tax levy. And that's the part that has become archaic. And, and again, what's good about having Bob here is that we can get that perspective of what's happening everywhere else, because as far as I know, the only cities in the state of Wisconsin that have a landfill are the cities of Superior and the city of Jamesville. So we don't have a whole lot of other colleagues to check with to see, what are you doing, and how are you handling things? So I want to touch a little bit, well, backing up, I was asked to describe what, briefly describe what an enterprise fund is, so I'll do that very, very quickly. Our general fund is not an enterprise fund, but we do have enterprise funds for our sewer utility, for our stormwater utility, and also for our landfill. And you all are very familiar with the fact that you get a user bill for your sewer charges, you get a user fee for your stormwater charges, and our landfill enterprise, we do charge, the bulk of revenue that comes into the landfill is a fee that we charge Western Lakes Superior Sanitary District for our contract with them. But the other main funding source is this general fund transfer, so that's what we'll be focusing on later. An enterprise fund should be self-sustaining. It shouldn't, it shouldn't have to rely on the general fund for subsidizing 20% of the costs, especially as we've moved through times with, time with levy limits and increased pressures on those tax dollars for things like our public safety, police, fire, Public Works. And, and when we have levy limits, you can see that having the landfill vie for those dollars is really putting us in a bad spot. Briefly, I will mention the timing issue of this, and as Mayor mentioned earlier, we had every intention of spending a lot of time in making sure that councilors and the public, citizens, everybody was very well educated on why we were bringing forward this request for a fee. And the discussion really started back when we adopted the 2013 landfill budget, and that was back in January. And at that time, I think that was probably one of the first years that we brought forward a budget that wasn't balanced. There was a, there was a deficit between revenue and expenses of somewhere around $260,000. But we made a note of that, and we said, we realize this, and that it's an issue, and it's an issue that we're going to need to deal with. And so I began briefing the Finance Committee on a very, very general level. We didn't get into a lot of detail, but I, during the early part of the year, I said, this will be coming forward, and we're going to need to talk about it. And so our plan was, was that we would engage with Dr. Larson for the months of March, April, and May. We'd be pulling together a lot of the information that we have tonight, and begin the public outreach after that, say, June, July. We could have gone through the end of '13, we could have, we even anticipated that we might have to go into 2014, 2014. However, what, what Mayor said earlier is that with the state adopting their budget, which goes into effect on July 1st, a motion was made in the Joint Finance Committee that was really not anticipated by any of us, and I think it was made probably three weeks ago, and that is to not allow us to try to move around levy limits and implement fees for any kind of a service that's currently, at least partially funded by our tax levy. So the Joint Finance Committee kind of banded it around. At first, they said they were going to make it retroactive, but the most recent language that we understand says that beginning on January 1st of 2014, municipalities cannot implement fees for a service previously covered by the tax levy. And when we look at the future of where our general fund is going, and we look at the future of where the landfill is going, we're seeing a huge problem with the funding and the dependency on the landfill. So our, our time period for the public outreach went from months and months, and maybe a year, literally down to, we're hoping that we can get a decision on this by the end of July, because we don't have, if the council approves this, we don't have a billing system for it. There are many, many decisions. As Bob mentioned, perhaps a pay-as-you-throw scenario where some people will pay less, some people will dump more garbage, so they, they would pay more. So we are on somewhat of a fast track, and I know that that's never appreciated by the council when you have a big issue presented to you and you're asked to make decisions, but we just want you to know the background of why we're bringing this forward now and the extremely shortened time period that we have to work with. So with that, I will pass it along to Public Works Director Getzmann to talk about operations.
I just want to say two things, Jeff, before you begin. One is I failed to introduce Patty Soliday from PS Advertising. Patty has offered her services to do the public outreach with us, so there's quality information, succinct information, so the why and the what and the how can be delivered to the public and the council, talking points to hopefully help the public really understand the complexity of the waste management system. And the second thing I would like to say is, with that, with the collection of the entire system, one reason why folks maybe don't understand it, not only because it's a very technical and complex operation, but equally important is, when it leaves the curb, it's gone, just like when we flush the toilet. It goes somewhere. But landfills, I remember the Marcus and Mike landfill back when I was mayor previously, and Bob does too. That was, the regulations were almost zip, and how that landfill was lined was by fiberboard from the fiberboard plant. And luckily, it's held up all these years, you know? So it was that simple. Today, you'll see in these slides that it's just a very complex system. The other thing that I'd like you to keep in mind as we go through these, when I said when it leaves the curb, it's gone, the collection system is perfect. When I say perfect, operationally, professionally, expertise, cost factor. You'll see in these slides where the collection system, I'm talking about the four trucks that pick up the garbage, the dumpsters issue, the service, the depreciation, the maintenance, hasn't changed. You'll see in the charts, that particular portion of the collection, management, disposal system has been extremely flat with regard to cost versus years. Which, what you will also see, and this is the point I want to get across, is think of a bright line. When that garbage leaves the curb, people think that they've paid for that, and what's being paid for by the average property taxpayer is less than $8 a month, and that only applies to the collection off the curb. That's what it takes. The bright line gets dramatic and complex when that truck leaves the street, and between the recycling, the processing, and the disposal, that's what you're going to see where the line and shear of the cost comes in. So Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Like, like the rest of the folks at the table here, I'd like to thank Dr. Larson for working with us on this project and for his expertise. I think that's been invaluable. As mentioned several times, the complexity of the landfill that the city operates has, has increased dramatically since its original construction back in about 1979, the first cell went in. And that's primarily where my comments, I'll start here, is the, the change that we've seen is not in the collection, as Mayor pointed out, the collection of the trash, it's the disposal aspect of it, and that's, that includes everything. Once, once the trash leaves the curb, operation of the landfill, construction of cells, gas collection systems, the flare we have, all of those things out there are all included in that number. So I've got several slides here, the next ones. The first things you'll see are a couple of aerial photos here. The first one is a facility layout that shows our current disposal area, that's the top area. We're building a pyramid here, basically, the, the highlighted area in the center is the tip, and we have a little bit of space left on Cell 3, which is up at the top, but Cell 5, Phase 1, the rectangles you see there, dead center to the bottom, is the most recent cell construction finished in 2012. And actually, the areas you see, the kind of whitish areas are, are actually where trash has been placed in the last six or seven months. This photo is only a few weeks old, so it's, it's about the extent of it. On the west side there, where the word "cell" sits, that is still about one-third of our most recent cell that has trash left to yet be placed in it. And then at the very bottom, Phase 2, is the piece that you just awarded for construction tonight, so we'll be going into construction on that here in the next few weeks. The second aerial photo there shows, again, the layout of the landfill as it sits, and highlighted are a bunch of the different components of the operation. Over time, we've collected different things, and some of those are, I guess, handed down to us in statute or other requirements. We do collect mattresses and things for recycling. There's a reuse center we've instituted for things that can, the public can take home if they reuse a table or furniture, or things that people want to discard. But more recently, electronics are now required to be recycled, motor, used motor oil, tires, all those kinds of things are all yard waste and brush, are not landfill, they're rather recycled or chipped up and reused. And so all of this kind of periphery stuff on the outside there shows you different aspects of the operation. The next, it looks like the next slide is a kind of a close-up there where we're placing trash, and that's in that Phase 1 area of Cell 5 that I was discussing there in the first aerial photo. The next two, though, really show an excellent example of the, the change in complexity. This is a cross-section, basically showing you the liner in the bottom of a, of a containment cell. In our early, first cells at the landfill were constructed this way, it's basically a clay liner compacted in place, and it has a leachate pipeline up the middle you see there to collect any of the rainwater that would seep through the trash in place, and we pump that out to the sanitary sewer system along the highway. The next slide, however, shows you our most recent cell construction, and you can see just by contrast how many layers there are in this liner construction. There's not only a clay liner now, but several layers of plastic liner material, some geosynthetic fabrics, and we have a pipeline to collect both clean groundwater underneath of the liner as well as a leachate line above it. But again, these, these are direct results of changes in the requirements, basically by DNR and other agencies throughout the years that have put different requirements on what cell construction needs to look like today, but this has a dramatic increase in price based on what that looks like versus the stuff from 30 years ago. stuff from 30 years ago. And along with that, the cell construction, we get, we've installed things like gas collection systems, and I mentioned the leachate collection before, which is the rainwater seeping through the trash. This map here shows you both of those things. The black is gas collection, and that's a network of piping. Basically, there's almost two miles of piping in this picture right here that is installed in the trash pile that you see out there at the landfill we've built over the years. The black lines are pulling out the methane gas, and those go to the flare that we have at the top of the screen up there. And you probably have heard us talk about carbon offset credits that we trade for, and that does provide a source of revenue for us, about $150,000 in 2012. But all of that gas is burned off, and the red lines depict there all of our leachate collection systems. So again, that's collecting all of the rainwater that seeps through the trash. And we send that up Mox and Mike Road in a forest vein, and it goes eventually to the wastewater treatment plant. But by contrast, none of this stuff was installed, again, years ago. And as environmental regulations have tightened on us and other requirements for design and construction of the landfill, what you see here is basically the result of that. It's Darian and other staff at the landfill do a considerable amount of monitoring now between load inspections. We have stormwater requirements. We've got, more recently, an air permit now with our gas collection system. There's groundwater monitoring, leachate testing. All of those lines you saw on the leachate map need to be cleaned each year. So there's a considerable amount of testing, inspection, and then maintenance work, I guess you'd say, at the landfill. And some of these last slides here just show kind of close-up shots of some of our different facilities. The oil waste, motor oil recycling shed there on the left, and the methane flare there on the right, it's generally, or basically, it's just a large matchstick. Burns about 1,400 degrees, and it converts all of that methane gas that's sucked out of the trash into carbon dioxide. Going to operational strengths of the landfill, I think Dr. Larson mentioned earlier, you know, we've run this, the city's run the Mox and Mike landfill since the late '70s. And it gives us a sense, we have the ability to locally manage not only the collection of trash, but also the recycling program, and then all the fees that are associated with that for residents here in Superior. I think the service has been excellent over the years, and we've held the line, I think, on the cost of the collection services. And with our local control, we're also offer, we also are able to offer things like the free landfill days that we have each year, where residents can bring things for free. We do have a residential spring cleanup, of course, that we just completed. And at times, like last year's flooding emergency, we were able to offer residents free disposal of things at the landfill following that disaster, too. As Dr. Larson mentioned, our compaction rate has been and continues to be well above industry standards. And what that really does is go to preserve the life of the landfill. The more trash we can compact into that airspace, obviously, the longer it will last. And when we're investing money into those containment cells, we want to make them last as long as possible. And lastly, we're, Mox and Mike landfill is located in a good location for several reasons. We're a good distance from any densely populated areas, which is good in terms of minimal odor and aesthetic impacts. And it also offers us the possibility of expansion on adjacent property. The city does own property to the east and the south of the current cells. And that obviously would offer a chance to site a new cell in the future. Contrasting the, some of the strengths of the landfill, of course, there's always challenges coming from some of the issues I showed on those earlier slides with the complexity, the change in complexity of cell construction. There's also higher costs for permitting. We have wetland permits, air permits, stormwater permits. I mean, each time we go to make a change in a cell or build anything new, those timelines and processes are much more expensive than they used to be. As well as the design and construction costs, again, the typical example I showed there of the different layers of that cell construction, there's a marked difference between what happened 30 years ago and today's construction. And the last thing, of course, similar to the wastewater issue here in town, a decreasing waste stream actually results in increasing cost per unit of, per ton of trash for us. And what I mean by that is, due to recycling programs, of course, we're reducing the volume of trash, and of course, even the economy drives that since about 2008, when the economy's kind of taken a downtick, and people are buying less, there's less waste generated as well. So we're depending on tonnage of waste for revenue, and when that number goes down, so does our revenue to operate. And it's dropped about roughly half a million dollars since our contract started in 2007 from, on our waste volume from the district. So that is an issue for us.
At this point, we're going to transition into some more detailed financial analysis. But before I begin, I've got a number of slides here. I just wanted to ask Bob or Mayor if you had any follow-up comments on Jeff's information that he just went through.
Just like to reinforce what Jeff says, with all the complexities that are there, the costs, of course, have risen. But the operation that's out there has met all those requirements, additional requirements, and it's done it with a cost-effective manner, as I can see. And so I'd like to laud him on what they're doing and how they're doing it out there.
Okay. This first slide, I kind of touched on that in my opening comments, and this is a definition of an enterprise fund that I find consistently on the internet from any number of sources. And again, it, the concept of an enterprise fund is that it will be supported by user charges. Because we have been subsidizing it with our tax levy is not, it's not illegal. We can certainly do that. But as Bob mentioned, it's a fairly archaic way of funding this type of a service. And I think, I think it's true, Bob, that you would say that's almost not seen anymore as a, very difficult to find. Okay. So our goal is to have this landfill enterprise as a self-sustaining operation and to prepare ourselves, because we have a contract right now with the Western Lakes Superior Sanitary District that goes through the middle of 2019. And we need to prepare ourselves for what happens at that point in time. And certainly, our options are that we may be interested in continuing on with another contract. But as we found with our current contract, it was way more difficult for us to be competitive with the tipping fee. And I'm kind of skipping around here a little bit, so I'll hold off my comments till I get to that point. But the point is, is that our enterprise fund is not self-sustaining at this point in time, and we need to fix it. And the reason that it's not self-sustaining is that, as Jeff just mentioned, we have a stream of waste that has been decreasing. And we also have the general fund transfer, and those are the two main areas that fund our landfill. And we're feeling pressure in both of those areas. We all know the difficulties that we had last fall in our general fund budget. And we started talking about things that hadn't been talked about before and hadn't been put on the table for consideration. And so that just tells us that we've gotten to a point where we're quite challenged within the general fund. So the reason I say it's not self-sustaining is that I don't see any capacity within our general fund either to continue the transfer or, and certainly, I don't think we're able to increase that transfer. Another thing within our landfill fund, and it's a problem in our general fund, we don't have contingency funds set aside. And that makes for really interesting budgeting and spending throughout the year. It's, ideally, we obviously should have a contingency in all of our funds because emergencies and unplanned events happen every single year. And so it just makes it quite a bit more chaotic if we don't have a contingency fund, and we have to keep coming back to the Council and saying, well, we've got this or that to cover, and we need to reduce the budget elsewhere to make that happen. So it's not the most efficient way to do things. State mandates definitely affect us. And as I mentioned earlier, the status of the legislation as a part of the state budget is making us, forcing us to act on this far sooner than we had anticipated. We all are aware of the levy, the levy limits that we've had, and they've been in place since 2006. And probably, at some point later on one of the slides, I'm going to talk about our budgets in the general fund. We've been at a $27 million level for many, many years, probably six, seven years. And I don't see that changing in the next couple of years. The $13 per ton fee that we have to collect and send to the state makes us very non-competitive when we try to negotiate a contract with the district, because they have other options. And if they were to choose a landfill in Minnesota, they wouldn't have $13 a ton to cover. And then Bob had mentioned earlier, RECA. I'm not familiar with that at all, but maybe later, or if there are any questions, I just believe that is causing us additional costs that we didn't have before for environmental-related issues. So here is, these are actual numbers after we closed out the year 2012. And you can see that the largest source of revenue that we have is our contract with the district at roughly $3.5 million. And we've had a contract with the district, our current contract is an eight-year contract. We've had five-year contracts. I think we had a six-year contract. And in between these times, we've been without contracts. And what we've found is that when we have the contract, money's coming in, and that helps us, that has helped us to be able to not have a fee. And between the district revenue and our general fund transfer, it covers well over three-quarters of what we need to operate the landfill. So this is kind of the visual that shows you how dependent we are on that contract. If that contract goes away, it doesn't mean that our costs are reduced by $3.4 million. We still have to run this landfill. We've got to pick up the garbage, and we have to dispose of it. And without the district and building cells to take that waste, we still have expenses of probably $2.5 to $3 million just for operating this landfill. So expenses, in, you don't need to go there yet, Chris, but in the next slide, I'll have a comment on the collection costs, which is what Mayor Hagan was referring to earlier. The cost to pick up garbage is actually a fairly small portion of the costs that are in our landfill fund. The big number, $3.8 million, that's for disposal, but that includes, that's where the annual depreciation for the cell construction comes into play, part of that $3.8 million. Also part of that is the $13 per ton tipping fee that we send to the state. And so that fee in and of itself is probably, probably at least $1.3 million, perhaps $1.5 or $1.6. So those two items are the bulk of what takes up the disposal portion of the cost in this fund. And we have a small portion for recycling. We have debt service that we have to pay back. Debt service is something new that came up five years ago. Previously, we didn't have to issue debt to cover the building of the cells and the operating of the landfill, and a minor, small amount for transfers to other funds that provide services to the landfill. And here's a slide that I was talking about in the blue line on the bottom. That's our collection costs, and you can see that as far back as we've tracked here to 1999, the collection costs have been roughly the same amount. And I know I won't be able to best address this, but I know at least a good part of that reason is because of automation within our landfill for that collection service. Disposal, it's very obvious when we don't have a contract, and we didn't have a contract, I believe it was for around 1999 to probably 2006, and I might be off a year or two there. But one of our recent contracts, not this current one, but the last one, started in 2006, where we had the increased waste coming from the district. And you can see where the costs go up. To provide that space, we have to build space, and that costs money. And then we have the, again, the increased tipping fees, or increased fees to the state. I don't think I really have many more comments on that slide. Now we move into 2013, and again, this is where we kind of crossed into a time where our expenses were starting to exceed our revenue. And we did make a point of this, as I mentioned, when we brought the budget forward in January, saying, we've moved into a different time, and I don't see the picture of this getting any better unless we make some changes. So again, it was a $264,000 difference between revenue and expenses. And quite frankly, there wasn't anything we could do in January. We knew that the issue would take a lot of discussion, and so that's what we had planned on doing. The, another visual here for you, where the district contract comes into play and the revenue jumps up substantially in 2007. That green line is total revenue for the landfill, and of course, it includes the general fund transfer and the district contract and a few other items. But you'll see the expense side of things really plugs along at a pretty consistent increase over the years. But the revenue doesn't keep up with it, and that's where things start to change in 2012. And the reasons, again, that the revenue didn't keep up with it is that we've got a contract with the district that stipulates what we can charge them, and we get an annual, on July 1st, we get an annual inflationary increase. But back in, I think it was 2008, we actually had deflation in one of those years. So, and we weren't increasing the general fund transfer because we couldn't afford to. And so that revenue started to level off, and it's finally switched where expenses are exceeding revenue. And again, the other thing that exacerbates that is that the tonnage of waste coming in isn't, I remember years where we took in 125,000 tons of waste from the contract with the district. And recycling is a wonderful thing, and you can see where it comes into play, that we have less waste that's coming into our landfill. The good thing of that is that it doesn't use up the space as quickly, but we still have the capital costs of constructing the space that we need to cover. And again, with the economy and people not buying as much, there just isn't as, we don't have the stream of waste that we did in prior years. And that, that will definitely affect our cash flow within this, within this fund. So the, going back to how this affects the general fund, and when I look, when I've done projections for the general fund, I try to extend them out at least four years. And we can only make projections based on what we know today. And what we've been knowing are many years of levy limits. And we're not allowed to increase our levy for any of the cost increases that happen in our budget that are simply inflationary increases. We don't have the ability to increase our levy to cover increased fuel costs, to cover if we have salary increases or benefit increases, and we haven't had salary increases for a couple of years. And those costs continue to increase, even though we've decreased staffing by 10% over a number of years. We've done whatever we can not to have, have it affect service levels. And when I look at where the general fund is going for the next four years, and under the assumption that the levy limits will stay, and that the state certainly seems or appears to want to have more of a say in our local budget, we're talking about really large deficits. And they won't hit in the year 2014 because we had, received a lot of grants for the police department department and the fire department that really kind of bailed us out for 2013 and 2014. But they're not all around after that point in time. And the year 2015 is really when it hits us hard. And we're talking, if we're going to try to sustain this $1 million transfer from the general fund, we're talking about a deficit of at least $1 million in 2015. And on top of this, there, not only are we trying to cover public safety and public works and all the other smaller departments, but we've got so much that has been taken out of that budget that that has caught up to us. We don't have, we're not keeping up on our IT needs. We're not keeping up on the smaller capital items that don't qualify for being in our larger capital improvement program. And just on a break between the meetings, I had a, one of the department has, came up and said our, our copier is, is no longer working, and there's just nothing there to cover these costs that will continue to come up. So that's why I say that, that this, this transfer has a huge effect on our general fund. And even though it has been great for our citizens to be able to say that we can provide you this complete garbage pickup, disposal, recycling service as a portion of your tax bill at just under $8 a month, it's completely non-sustainable. This graph here shows what our intent was some years ago, probably three or four years ago, where the idea was, because we didn't really know that funding the landfill partially from our general fund, we didn't really know that that was an archaic way of doing things. And so what we planned on doing was preparing ourselves for the year 2019, when the contract with the district ended, and saying, we need to get that general fund transfer up to at least, it, it should actually go higher, at least $2.5, $3 million, probably $2.5, to cover if, cover the services to run the landfill if we do not have a contract with the district. But again, that's, that is absolutely not what we're recommending here due to the pressures within the general fund. So the options, and they have been mentioned earlier by Mayor Hagan and, and by Dr. Larson. We know that there are at least three options, and two of them, I think we feel are, are not, not good options at all. The first one, to do nothing and to ignore this and to lose kind of this window of time where we do have the ability to fund this enterprise fund by a user fee, as I think it should be. If we do nothing, we lose that opportunity to do that. And the deficits that I talked about in the general fund, if we still have to put that $1 million, we're going to run into huge deficits. So we don't think that doing nothing is, is a good option. The second option, privatizing or the sale of the landfill. And what happens there is that we lose complete control of this enterprise, and we're at, at the whim of a, a private company. And we've been talking about the costs across the bridge and in other communities, and I don't think it's unusual that people will pay probably $30 a month or more for all of these services. And so we, if we choose to get out of this business, we're giving that up. The other opt-
Can I have Dr. Larson speak to his experience with the privatization across the country?
The private companies, of course, are doing an extremely good job. But the one thing that you do, as, as Gina has mentioned, is your, your landfill is a very valuable resource, as is your solid waste collection program and your recycling program. And once you let those go, then you no longer have the management of those, you no longer have the control of those. And then it depends on the company that you go with as far as privatization is concerned. And that's corporate decisions often, and so on and so forth. So you may see an S, you know, a lower price at the very beginning, you may see an escalation of those fees. It all depends on that company and which one you buys you out or selects, you, however you do it. So it's, in my way of thinking, it's probably better in your situation in particular with your contract over with the sanitation district and so on and so forth. You have a resource here, which is a good resource, and I think that the city should stay with it and hang on to it, and just change the way of, of, of funding it into a more appropriate, modern way of doing it.
Thanks, Bob. And that brings us to the, the last option that we're presenting tonight, which is the implementation of a fee. And not, not to bog down too much on our, our bond rating, but I can tell you that our, our bond rating agency would definitely look at this, look upon this favorably to have a fee funding this instead of the general fund transfers because they know how, how much competition there is for the, the taxpayer dollars to fund public safety and public works. And if, if the landfill has to vie for those tax dollars, that's not completely, we're not, we can never be totally confident that the landfill will, will win out over public safety. In fact, I, I don't think it ever would. So a graph, a graph to option one, which was continue on with a $1 million general fund transfer and have no, no change in what we're doing now. And when you look at this graph, it doesn't look that bad. Your, your revenue is under your expense line. They look fairly close, but Chris Bronson pointed out to me that even though they're very close, that represents, when you're starting in 2013 and 14, that represents a $300,000 difference. And when you accumulate that, you get to, get to the end of our, our contract with the district, and you've got a, you've got an enterprise fund that has a, a deficit balance of about $2.6 million. And obviously, our auditors get very excited about that, and they say you can't have funds that are in deficits like that. You need to cover it from somewhere. Who, who, what, what fund would cover that? The general fund. Because you can't take it from the sewer fund, that's for sewer rates. You can't take it from grants, federal grants, they're for a specific purpose. So we don't, the general fund is where we would have to go. Option two. This is even more disastrous. This would be having the pressure to completely eliminate the general fund transfer and not have a user fee at all. And you can see the revenue significantly below expenses. That would have us in a position at the end of our contract of a deficit in this fund of $8.6 million. So not a good option. And option three, and we've been tossing around this $20 per month user fee, and I, I do have some, some updated thoughts on that after lots and lots of, of conversation today. And, but this gives you a picture of sustaining our landfill. And it may look like with the revenue above expenses, I, I guess one could easily jump to the conclusion that, well, you're overfunding that, you're overcharging. But the problem is when we get to 2019, we still have debt to pay back. And so under this scenario, we would end up with approximately $6 million at the end of the contract, but we still have $2.6 million of debt. And what, what isn't in these assumptions is if something goes wrong. And we had, I think it's maybe a good time to bring up an issue of the berm failure and the clay issue. And we're not increasing, we're not implementing a fee because we had a berm failure. If, if there were increased costs at our landfill, that was actually probably a pretty small portion of any overages on the project called cell number five. I'm really not going to get into this, but we had issues with our clay there, that it wasn't the right moisture content, and there was a lot of, Jeff could talk a lot about this, how we were digging clay and setting it aside, hoping it would dry to the right moisture content and putting it back in, and it was horribly expensive. And there was a, a portion of our landfill where we hit a very bad spot in the soil. And that had not happened for the entire time that I've worked for the city, for 20 years. And we built a lot of cells in the past, and never did we come across an issue like that. So it was very unusual. So when we're going to talk about the fee, and if it's $20 or maybe a little bit less than that, we just need to be aware that we need to be open. And if something, you know, if we do have, I mean, really significant cost overruns, we will need to look further into that, that level of a fee.
I'd like to just address this a little bit. As Gene said, it may look like in 2014, we'd be collecting more money than is felt necessary. But if you look at all the options, even back to option one, where we continue with the $1 million transfers to subsidize the landfill, there's still a gap. And the gap grows as the years go on, especially if we get, when we get to 19 and that contract goes away. Even if it doesn't go away, there's still a gap by using the transfers. The only difference is, is that the transfer of the general fund monies will grow and the gap will still remain. But in option three, the, the good thing about collecting the revenues as shown there is that, it does two things. When, when the contract ends, there will be sufficient funds to operate the landfill, and it will prevent, I forgot to put that in the wrong words. It will allow us not to issue any debt.
Yeah, very good point, and is a huge point, and I, and neglected to make that. Three goals that I think are, are very important. Number one, we want to get ourselves in a position in the year 2019 that we're not, we're not in panic mode if we don't have a contract with the district. We want to be self-sustained at that point in time. We also want to have enough airspace left in our landfill so we can take the, the waste from our, our citizens for a number of years, many years. I think, I think we're projected to have 15 years of airspace if, if we only take our, our citizens' waste. And the other thing is that we were projected to bring forward a request to the council to issue more debt for the landfill in 2013 to cover the south half of the cell five project. You know, one good thing that has happened is that the, the estimates for finishing that project, the bid, the bids came in lower, significantly lower. Hopefully, we won't run into any clay issues or anything like that. But it would be a huge bonus to us if by implementing this fee, we didn't have to come forward and issue more debt. I can't promise that, but when I've done projections at $20 a month, I think it's very possible that we don't have to issue more debt. Even a little bit less than 20, and we could probably swing it. I briefly mentioned already the, the critical timeline that we have. And just a, a little bit more information on what the state has, how they've worded the motion, is that you wouldn't be able to implement a fee for those items that are mentioned. There are garbage collection, fire protection, snow plowing, street sweeping, and stormwater management. And we don't have any intention of implementing a fee for snow plowing or street sweeping. We already have a fee for stormwater management, fire protection. I can't, nobody has mentioned at all that we're going to be implementing a fee for fire protection. But we are looking at garbage collection here. Now, the public outreach portion, again, that has gotten extremely shortened. We're going to do everything possible to get as much education out on this issue by July 16th. And, and the reason we put July 16th is that it's the second meeting for the council of that month. And as we're working backwards and thinking how long it will take us, working backwards, if our goal is to have one month in the year 2013 billed out with this fee, obviously, that's December, but we have, we don't have a billing system for this. And we have to do billing systems, not only for, if this, if this is approved, for the landfill and for the, the sewer bills. I think I already mentioned that. And, and that will take time. That will absolutely take, that will take months of time to work up a, a, a good billing system. And it really pushes us into this very quick timeframe that we need a decision made so we can move forward. If we, if we succeed with this by the, by the end of July, we would then take August, September, October, get that billing system up and running. And we don't, we, we, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but we have a lot of decisions, whether that would be done in-house or contracted. We do have a lot of options for that, but I, you know, I don't want to go too far down the road in getting into details about that. But working backwards, you can see where we've really been crunched into, not a lot of time to work with. Back to the $20 fee. We, a number of us met with Councilor Olson today for probably a couple hours. And I, I won't ask on behalf of, I, I won't ask questions that I think Dan might ask, but we, we, he did ask, can you lower this to $15? Because $20, going from having it paid as a part of your tax bill, going up to $20 is a big change. And so he asked, can we do this for $15? And I said that I had run those projections, but I didn't feel, I didn't feel comfortable with that, that level because I don't think, I simply don't think it will, I don't think it will cover us. I don't think we'll end up in a real good position at the end of the contract and, and looking at the debt that we still have remaining. But we talked about where can we go in between those two numbers. So we're actually looking at, and, and we have said up to $20, but we're actually going to recommend backing that off to something more like $17.50 for the first three years, and then the three years after that bumping it up to $20. And when I say $17.50, what I mean by that is, that's pretty much an average. When we talked about the pay-as-you-throw, which will become a very important issue for people, and especially the people that don't generate, you know, maybe one bag of garbage a, a week, it'll be very important for them to know that they can have an option of getting a smaller can, smaller container, and that people that produce more waste will have to logically pay more than that $17.50. But we're, we're giving that number out as a kind of a ballpark of what we think an average bill may be. And it, it won't get us to where $20 would. It's not as much of a comfort level for me when I look at the, at the financials, but we also realize that we don't want to lose this whole thing, that we want to bring forward something that we think is as reasonable and as low as possible. And I missed one thing, public outreach. Can you back up? Oh, there we go. So we are going to do whatever we can, not only in just the next couple of months, but we plan on extending this with Patty's help through 2013 by whatever methods we can reach
On the public outreach, to assist the council with as much information as possible from the public, one thought we have is to have three different public information meeting, three different days of public information meetings much prior to the July 16th period of time where we believe a decision, decision has to be made one way or another. And the- And the suggestion is to have the meetings here because of the essence of time element. Perhaps one at 10:00 in the morning, two in the afternoon, and 6:30 at night, so different people have their, for different time schedules. And separate that one out by a few days, then have another 10, 2, and 6:30. Separate that out, another 10, 2, and 6:30. Then we'd bring back to the council information and the questions, concerns that the public may have that want to interface with those, those public information meetings. And certainly, the public, the press, the counselors are more than welcome to sit and listen or participate too, so that we have the ability to at least expose this to the public in a refi, not refined, but confined period of time. And, but the, we believe there has to be a decision made. If there isn't one made timely, we will not be able to institute a fee accordance, in accordance with what we believe the law will be when the biennial budget is passed, which will require us to not be able to do this in 2014 without lowering the levy. And that will make us, as we've all gone through budget sessions before, what do we do? We'll be full of angst on what gets funded, what doesn't get funded. And if that were to be the case, and as we watch the costs of operation rising and the revenue sources decreasing, the 2019, I think Jean had in the slide or was that the general fund would be tapped for between 1 and 3/4 and $2 million, which causes restraint on other services. In essence, if that were the case, the landfill or the disposal of our refuse and recycling would be competing for either the first or second position of the highest-funded departments in the city. Taking place over right now, the police department is the highest cost, Public Works is second, and police, or fires, third. So landfill may wind up as the second highest-cost operation if we continue to use the general fund for subsidizing the landfill. Let's open it up.
Okay, so who would like to start? And I'll, I'll wait till the end, because I think many of my questions will be answered, but I have 13 different ones. So, but Counselor Finson, it was the first light I saw, so you go first.
Okay. My first question would be, if these fees are determined, as we do assess the public, would we assess the non-taxpaying entities the same fee? Like the schools and the churches and, yeah, any other institution that doesn't pay taxes in our community?
I think it would be the same people that if you get a sewer bill, you're going to get a landfill bill.
Okay, well, that was, that's your only question? Okay. Counselor Sweeney was next, was second, rather.
I have a number of questions, but maybe you only ask two or three, and then give someone else a chance. This tipping fee that the DNR is charging, has we done any work to try and reduce that? Is that a possibility at all? You seem to say it's, at least compared to Texas, it's quite out of line.
I'm not familiar with the genesis of that, what it came up for. Often, what they came up for, and how that happens, is when you're moving waste from one state to another state, that they establish a differential fee, a much higher fee, that says, keeps that waste out. And if that was an intent by DNR to stop, or by someone to stop waste moving from Duluth or Minnesota over to Wisconsin, or from Chicago over to Wisconsin, or however they're doing that, there was a Supreme Court ruling, it's called the dormant clause, dormant commerce clause. And the dormant commerce clause says that do you, it's not legal for you to establish a differential fee based on point of origin. And the rationale behind that was the, waste is considered a element of commerce. It has value to it. And so the dormant commerce, commerce clause says that only Congress can set those rules. And it went all the way to the Supreme Court, and it was upheld that you could not set differential fees based on point of origin. So I don't know what the genesis of this fee is, but I know it's, to me, it's very outlandish. And it gives the city of Superior a very difficult time to be competitive if they order to develop a landfill in Clokania Canyon, or wherever they, they do one. And you just no longer can be competitive. So you have to start worrying about the idea, what do you do in 2019? And that fee system will help accommodate that. And you're having them help you build the cells that will accommodate you out for 15 years beyond the 2019 timeframe.
So if I, if I hear what you're saying, it's at least worth pursuing with the DNR?
Oh, I think it's definitely worth pursuing.
Okay.
And it's an artificial fee. I don't know what the, but the basis of that was, other than revenue. And states are always looking for avenues of revenue. And so it's, I would definitely encourage them to look into that and trying to change it. It needs to be changed, I think.
Okay, thank you.
You know, in Texas, it's a buck and a quarter.
Yeah, that's what you said.
And it's, you know, that's less than 10% of what that.
And you get some of it back. My next question is to do with the $20 fee. I'm not, maybe very early to talk about this, but in that, assuming it's $20 or whatever, is there a working capital percentage built into that? Or is it just, we hope $20 will, $15 will work out, and if there's something left, it'll be left? Or is there a percentage actually built into it? 3%, 4%, whatever the, whatever you come up with? Is that built into that number, Jean?
We didn't, when we, when we came to a figure of $20, we didn't necessarily break it down and say, okay, for our recycling portion, we get a, we have costs of $400,000, and we get a state grant for $100,000. We're going to say 50 cents of this fee will cover recycling. So we didn't go to the extent that would say, of this $20, $8 is for capital cost. $3 is for operating costs that the general fund was previously covering. We didn't go to that much detail, but every one of those things were considered, because what we do is, we work with Public Works, and we know that in the year 2022, we have a $4 million capping liability for, I don't know if that's Cell Five or which cell that is. But we project out how much, how much space do we need? What kind of, are we going to need compactors? When do we need them? We project out everything, whether it's an operating cost or a capital cost. And we have, the way that our, our spreadsheets are set up, we can simply plug in a number, whether it's $20, and then we look, okay, here's what happens at the end of 2019, after we've taken everything into consideration, paying back our debt, the whole works. Let's plug in $15 and see where we get. So to make a long answer shorter, we haven't said XML.
That's fine. You haven't done that yet. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Herrick, you, you were next with your light on.
Yeah, thanks. Just, just one question. It would be a monthly billing system, I assume? Same thing with the wastewater? And also with that, is, will there be an additional fee like the wastewater? And also, will that wastewater fee, that water light charge for us, will that go away with the wastewater billing?
I'll answer the easy question first. We definitely want this to be a monthly billing, because I don't, I'm sure there are people here that remember when we used to bill, back in the mid-'90s, we used to send out one sewer bill a year, and everybody got it right after Christmas. And it caused nothing but problems, because you would have homeowners that changed, and then we'd have to go back and prorate bills, and it was an absolute nightmare. So our goal is to have this a monthly bill. Now, the, the fee for, currently for our sewer billing, we do obviously have to pay waterlight and power a certain amount each month to do that service for us. So that's what we would be analyzing, utilizing a different service to do this billing for us, or doing it in-house. And when I say in-house, the, the concern I have with that is thinking of our stormwater bills. And every six month, six months, we send out approximately 11,000 stormwater bills. And then they all come in one month later, and then we, we don't have staffing that can process that amount of bills coming in. If we were to do this in-house, we absolutely have to add people. But we want to do it in the most cost-effective way. So what we'll do is, we'll analyze, well, would this take a couple of people? And especially in light of having the sewer bills come back to us. Or can we contract out for this service? I know that there are, there is a local bank that does this service for the city of Duluth for Comfort Systems, and they're very good at doing that service. It's very automated, and we just need to analyze all of our options. So my biggest concern was getting a clear understanding of why the fee was needed, and then, if it's approved, transition very quickly into determining how that billing system will work. But again, yes, we do want a monthly billing.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Counselor McKenzie was next, and then Counselor Finson.
Just a follow-up question. Jeff gets men about the $13 per ton DNR environmental fee. It's been described as outlandish. Have we ever been given an explanation, or have we ever inquired why we're so much higher than, than other states? And, you know, if we could change that somehow?
I, I think I can answer that, Counselor. My understanding, and this is a little bit of memory back when I lived in the southern part of the state, there was concern by people in Wisconsin that refuse was coming to Wisconsin from other points of origin. This is what Dr. Larson was referring to. And the reason I remember this is there was contracts in the southern part of the state from Illinois, and I think from the southern part, southern southeastern part of Minnesota into the, the other areas in the southern part of Wisconsin. And of course, the advent or the beginning of the contract that was off and on with WSSD. So the reason, I believe, for the tipping fee portion to the DNR, the $13, which was raised a couple times to the level it is now, was, it was believed by doing that, that it would deter. So it wasn't that they charged, we're going to charge an extraordinary, extraordinary amount of tipping fee at Superior, or maybe Beloit, or wherever, or Janesville. They had to do it universally to get around the federal provision, the, whatever it was called, Bob, I forget. And that, that we believe, I believe, that's why it all began.
Okay. If I?
Go, go ahead.
Another issue that, as, as the mayor says, if they are going to charge a fee that is different than Minnesota, or Duluth, or whatever it is, that's fine. But what you have to do is you levy the same fee against everyone within the state of Wisconsin. And so as long as you do that, you've met the idea of the dormant commerce clause. And so you've met their, what their intent was. But by the same token, if that's something that we have in your situation, in Superior's situation, you're looking upon the districts, the sanitary district, that's a revenue source for you, a very large revenue source for you. And they're, and they're paying an extra $13 a ton. And if somebody comes in competition to that in northern Minnesota here or someplace, I don't see you being able to continue with that.
Mm-hmm.
So then that would terminate. And, but fortunately, you have a contract that goes on until 2019. And that, that's the good news. Bad news is you may, you may lose that.
Yeah. If I could, one more, one more quick question, back to you, Jeff. I've had some phone calls about this, and it's been suggested that maybe we could generate some cash flow to the, to the landfill by, by taking in construction materials. Chemists, I think, I believe, used to have something, and, and do not have that anymore. So I think it would be a needed, you know, service. What, what is your opinion about, because there would be a, a certain charge per ton for that material? Is that correct? Is that something we could look into?
Yeah, we, we could look at it, Counselor. You know, with, with that construction, with that CND site out there available to us before, we haven't taken much of that material. It does cause us some issues in handling it at the, you know, if we get large timbers. And we've gone through this even with the district now, we're not taking a lot of cable or rope or large timbers and things that we've had. That's, I think what led to a fire several years back too, was some, like a demolition site that was a burned building.
Yeah.
So we've turned a lot of that stuff away and just not dealt with it. And it, and it does, obviously, it fills up our space faster too, if we start taking more. So it's, it's something we'd have to evaluate, I guess.
Yeah, and I think that, well, I think that you, you show on one of your maps that, or slips, that, that we are taking in a lot of things, and there's a need for, for that material. It's got to go somewhere. So again, I, typically, I don't know how much that, that go, that goes per ton as well, right? Goes by?
Yeah, it would, right.
Yeah. So anyways, just a thought.
So Todd, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I'm, for, for some reason or another, quite familiar with the, with the demolition landfill type stuff. The, the, an important note to make here is the requirements for solid waste such as refuse, garbage, that type of thing, are quite a bit different than what's required for a demolition landfill. So if you remember those first few slides where they show the clay liner and the leachate collection system, that's about what's required for a demolition-type landfill right now. Now, adding all of that expense, so you're, we'd be paying a lot more for that demolition, I guess is what I'm trying to say, using up very valuable, very expensive airspace for something that can be put in a, in a, in a place that doesn't require as much technology, as much, as much liner construction, that type of thing.
You say, you're thinking that it would lose money?
You're, you're, you don't have to construct as, as complex of a liner, is what he's saying, or an expensive liner to start a CND.
Right, the, the, the two, the two cross-sections in there are, are the perfect example of it, I believe, because the, the, the construction and demolition landfill is the, is the three-foot compacted clay liner with the leachate collection system, rock over the collection system, and a foot of sand on the bottom. You have a demolition landfill. The solid waste landfill, you have the dewatering below, you have the, the 60-millimeter geosynthetic fabric, the, the liners, I mean, the, the, I don't know, what's the depth of the, the washed rock? 18 inches of washed rock? It's just, they're, they're very different requirements. And it's, it's very expensive to build the solid waste landfill when you can put the demolition. It's just like recycling. Well, you don't want to put, you don't want to use up your solid waste landfill space with something that doesn't need to be in there.
Right.
If we can put it in a cheaper place, we should put, be putting it in there.
Yeah.
That's, that's how I, how I see that.
Yeah.
But it, but it is a good thought, anything we can put out there.
Yeah.
But I believe that was sold, and I think there's, there's at least one over across the bridge, over in the Oliver area too, for demolition.
Yeah, I see your point, yeah, thanks.
Counselor Finson?
Jean, I think you mentioned something about a possibility of different fees for different-sized containers. And we do have a lot of seniors living around town in private residence and stuff. And it seems that we've got the standardized cans now, they're all roughly the same size, and the equipment can handle it. Would we require different-sized, or other equipment to handle different containers? If we went and approved, say, a 20-gallon, or a 50-gallon, or whatever, instead of 90-gallon, would our current equipment handle that? Or would we have to purchase a whole bunch more? And then if we did that, would we encourage a lot more recycling? And could we have that on a weekly basis rather than a, you know, twice-weekly as we have it now? I think that if we had small containers for solid waste garbage and bigger containers for recycling, we might find a difference.
Yeah, to answer the question on whether we could handle it, I, I was trying to get that information out of the shop today, just on that very topic. I, I think there's a way to make our automated handlers handle different-sized cans. We have to take a look at that yet, but that would be our goal, is to, is to make them pick up a couple of different sizes. How exactly, I mean, different rail systems, all the different, different brands of trucks and arms all handle that differently. So coming up with a way that our particular setup would do that, I guess, is our, is the ticket here, or the trick. But you're right, I mean, if, if you have- all handle that differently. So coming up with a way that our particular setup would do that, I guess, is the ticket here, or the trick. But you're right, I mean, if you have, that's generally, I think Dr. Larson would say the same thing, if you have a pay-as-you-throw system, I mean, it does tend to encourage, it encourages the recycling, and also rewards the resident for, you know, throwing less trash and recycling, because you pay a lower fee for your monthly service, too. So there's two positives. One, the less material going to the landfill, and two, they get to pay a slightly lower fee for that.
The other thing is, the family with four or five kids is going to generate a lot more garbage, but they're also less able to pay a larger fee than a person, a single-family person living alone. It doesn't necessarily come out equitably. If you look at, you know, people with four or five little kids and lots of diapers, they're going to pay a lot more than the person that probably can afford to pay a greater fee.
Counselor Sweeney, I think, you were next, and then Counselor Herrick.
Just one more question in terms of whatever the fee, if it's a $20, whatever it is. Have you broken down the percentage of the capital costs versus the operational costs? Okay. And then, what does a cell five-two, what's the longevity of that?
Um...
And you don't have to answer that, but my question would be, then, would you capitalize over that, over the term, the life of that cell?
The answer is yes. I don't know exactly how many years.
Okay, all right. So that could change that $20 fee to $23 or $17?
Well, based on what we're estimating right now for our capital needs, like I said...
You don't have to answer that.
It's okay, though, I'm happy to answer it, because we, we're anticipating, what we're permitted for right now is the footprint of cell five completion. That's what we're permitted for right now. So we, and then you just awarded the contract for that tonight, so pretty solid on those numbers. But then the big decision comes in between here, if we decide that we want to site another landfill. So, yeah, we've got some costs in here to start that process for the permitting, but until we get a few more years down the road, we won't know what those costs are. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sure. Counselor Herrick was next, and then Counselor Fantasy.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just two questions. First one is for Gene. Gene, if it wasn't for the current legislation which forced immediate action, what, I know eventually this is going to come into play, but how much time would we have had if we would have to rush into this?
Very good question, Counselor. And remember when I was saying that we really didn't run into some more major problems with our general fund until the year 2015? And that's because of the SAFER grant and the police department grants. We anticipated that if the council didn't feel comfortable voting on this, even after significant discussion in 2013, that we would still try to pursue it, because we feel very strongly about it. And we thought that we could go into the year 2014 and still have these discussions before running into the year 2015. But now that's, that's not an option anymore. So it was definitely our original intent that this was, this is a huge issue, very big issue. And, and nobody ever anticipated that we'd have to fast-track it like we're doing right now.
Okay, based on that, then, I mean, could, and we have to mandate, or have it approved by the end of the year. So with that in mind, I mean, could we start out a few months with lower fees, and eventually, you know, give the people some time, and then gradually go into the fees you're looking at?
That's a really interesting thought. And the year 2013, we're already set with our funding. We've already got that transfer that's going into the landfill. So if we, you know, if we implemented it even earlier than December, I mean, I, if you implement it in December for one month, that $17.50, is that better than starting it a little early and doing $8 and $10 and having a complicated billing system? I think just, I like your way of thinking, but I don't know that it would be much of a benefit to the citizens.
What, starting at a lower rate, even though they know it's going to be, you know, let's say, the $20 eventually?
Well, what we're doing, we decided that we could back off from the $20, and for the most part, I'm talking about the year 2014.
Sure.
Even though we'd have one in 2013. I think we can back down to $17.50 for the years 2014, 15, 16, and then bump it up to $20 in 2017 at that point.
Mm-hmm.
But again, there's, I could never guarantee you that we will not run into problems at the landfill again, a significant problem. But what I'm saying now, what we know now for our capital, and that's the biggest portion, or one of the biggest portions, of our costs, is that we believe we can handle this at $17.50 for the first three years.
Okay, thank you. And then whoever wants to answer this, just a quick nutshell definition of Subtitle D, and what it, what it does, or what it doesn't do, or...
Subtitle D. Subtitle D is, excuse me, is an amendment to RECCRA, Resource Conservation and Recovery Act of 1976, Public Law 94580, which is really getting us into the landfill business. Subtitle D was very specific, and what it did is amended RECCRA, the original RECCRA, and it was specific to landfills. And we were talking about a cost differential between CND, construction, demolition, debris, and so on and so forth, in a landfill that has all the requirements in there for all the leachate collection, monitoring, the whole nine yards that are required under that bill, under that law. And all states have adopted it. When it was originally came, when it originally came out, some states were trying to be reticent to not do it. But eventually, all states said yes, all territories said yes. So it's the law of the land, so they try to level the playing field across. But that's, Subtitle D is really landfills. And it was, we thought that it would increase the cost appreciably. But what's happened is, it's caused more regionalization. And so they've gone to economies of scale involving larger landfills. And that, because of economy of scale, you can reduce the cost of that. So we didn't see the $14, the anticipated cost that would happen. But that's specifically for landfills, and that's what makes his job so complex, and makes costs so high.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fantasy?
One other, excuse me, one other point on that, Bob. Schedule D also put most cities under 50,000 in population out of the landfill business, because the cost was so prohibitive, because the smaller landfills had to do the same thing as the mega landfills, and it became cost prohibitive for smaller landfills and communities to compete with the cost.
Just to embellish that, is in Texas, we found, when they started in 90, 1993 wasn't when the bill passed, and you had a year to get new everything and get all everything in place. But people became very concerned of the additional costs that were taking place, because you had to do everything with the basic requirements of liners, et cetera, et cetera, and leachate collection, all that. So they did. We lost hundreds of landfills in Texas because of that. And so it did have a huge impact, not only on cost, but on the provision of the services itself. But you're fortunate in the sense that you have the district's waste coming in here, so that brings you above that level. We did a study on that, and we found that 50,000 people was kind of the breakpoint. If you had 50,000 people or less, you probably should close your landfill. If you had more than 50,000 equivalents, then you would, you could stay in business. And that was just a rough estimate of that, of who should stay in business, who should get out.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, now Counselor Fantasy.
Assuming we entered into this, this $17.50 for three years, and then went up to the $20. But in the meantime, we went to the DNR, and hit them on a really good day, and they agreed to lower their $13 per ton quite a bit. I'm assuming this system would allow this council to look at that and lower those user rates based on that.
Here's what I think would happen. As Dr. Larson mentioned, and as a number of you have asked questions about this $13, we were talking earlier about timing of everything that we wanted to do. And certainly, short-term and most immediate was seeking the $20 fee. But we started to set longer-term goals as well, medium-term and long-term goals. And dealing with the $13 fee was put in the medium-term section of our goals. So we, even before the questions were asked of us, we have that on our list as something that we want to approach the state with. Here's my understanding of what would happen. If we caught the DNR on a good day, and they said, we're going to lower this back down to $9, what happens is that we have to lower our tipping fee in our contract with the district. That right now, they pay whatever that tipping fee is per the contract, they send it, they send it to us, and then we send it on down to the state. And so we would be required to lower, we wouldn't be able to keep charging the equivalent of a $13 portion of that tipping fee for the district. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't mean more money for us through the life of this contract. But what it would do is, when we get to the middle of 2019, we'd be in a much better position to, to bid on that, that waste from Duluth. Because the district, they, after a lot of discussions, they chose to work with the city of Superior because of proximity, and the past relationship, I think, we've had through these contracts. But they didn't, they didn't choose the lowest bidder. And we didn't necessarily get the amount that we wanted either, but we knew that we needed to have this contract at that time. So, long story is, it will definitely help us in the long run if we can get that lowered.
Counselor Olson?
Okay, I've got a few things here, but first of all, Mr. Larson, it was a pleasure meeting you today, and all the issues that we did in that couple hours of time, I kind of beat up on these people. But a few questions. Whoever wants to answer, I guess, Gene, and this one for you. Where would we pull administrative fees out of to institute a billing system?
I would recommend that comes out of the landfill. That we would charge whatever, whether it's additional staff, or contracting out for that service, that should come from the landfill.
So the money that's in there now, or the process that we're in from the general fund putting into the landfill? Or do we have deficit spending, or are we okay?
We would anticipate that that would be incorporated in the estimates that I've done, and a part covered by the $17.50.
Okay. Because that's going to be an ongoing, reoccurring thing, and it's never going to get any smaller, cost of postage, everything.
Exactly.
The other, what's a tipping fee? 36 bucks, something like that?
I think so.
Our tipping rate is 46, but our tipping fee is about 33.
Okay. Yeah, because it is over a third, then. It balances out to be about, based on the $3,452 in revenue and 95,000 tons, be roughly $36.34 to break even. So then we're taking the $13 off, so we understand that, then we're taking 13 bucks off that. The, the new berm that is, or the new cell that is being built, and that we approved the construction for, what did we put into architects and engineers to make sure that we do not have a failed berm? I think everybody in this room knows how critical I am of what happened, how it was handled, and the press, the way the press handled this. So in a somewhat effort to avoid another problem like we had, anticipating consistency of the soil, more of a guarantee, or somewhat of a comfort zone for the citizens of Superior, how we are going about the administration and the architects and engineering's responsibility in this next cell? How are we?
I know, I know Dr. Larson can't address the actual costs for engineering or architects, but if he could make some comments about berm failures in general, I think that would be good for the public to know.
I can only address that from a generalized standpoint, as we discussed earlier today. But I would, I think that due diligence was done initially, in terms of, you had no failures that were occurring on cells one, two, three, and four. And so they came up with a boring plan, and so on and so forth, as far as the design and engineering, based on that. Well, I think since they found it, that in fact, did not find, the lens that was in there, the soft soils, and the soft clays, and too much water, and so on and so forth, that the upcoming budget for the new cell five, phase two, is, I'm sure, much larger in that sense, because they did find, have a failure that occurred in that berm. And those failures do occur. And they occur because the good Lord never made everything uniform. And you may find these lenses, and you may find these things in there. And often in the boring plan, if you've never had any other problems, the boring plan does not, is not so intensive, nor is it expensive. So you try to cut costs there, and I don't know if they did that or not. But it wasn't found, and so what happened is, is that it resulted in the berm failure. But I would say, and I would relate to Jeff here, I refer to Jeff, is that I would hope that they've taken into account the failure that happened in phase one of five, and make sure that their boring plan, and their design, and how they're going to build this thing, is much different than phase one.
And that's actually my question. Have we done that in the design and engineering for this next berm?
Yeah, that's basically exactly what has happened. When the berm failed that we had in the first phase, we stopped construction and did borings in that area to try to figure out what happened to the subsurface soils. And then following that, we did a whole, they laid out a pattern of borings that went through the rest of the construction, had to be, that had to be rebuilt, as well as the cell, cell five, phase two, that you saw on the map up there. So there was an extensive pattern of borings done. And actually, they did find a, and I'm trying to remember exactly how long it was, 300 to 400 feet, someplace along our southern line. So if that rectangle lays east to west, the long way, I think the east-west direction is about 1,100 feet maybe long. And there was maybe a quarter of that that had some weaker soil. And so they did change the design in that area. There's a flatter berm, and they moved it a little bit to try to accommodate for that. So, yeah, you're exactly right, that's, we have tried to address that in this next phase.
That's reassuring. And then one final question, and I'll leave it up to whoever else, but what about non-complacency? How are we going to manage this? How are we going to police it? If we get to a pay-as-you-throw, if we get to a system as to who qualifies for a small can, medium can, large can, the probability, and there will be, of cheating? We have to, if we do have a good littering law and dumping garbage order and stuff like that, where, where in the dollars are we going to be able to assure that this program is going to work? We've got a great idea, we're going to stumble on money, I'm sure, because it's our taxpayers. But what's, what do we got to offer?
I learned a lot from Dr. Larson today, when we started asking just those very questions. And the containers that we would have, I'm, at some point, I'm going to defer to Dr. Larson to help answer this question, but we talked about containers that have a cover on them, that you have to be able to cover, you put your garbage in there, you have to be able to cover it. You can't set a bag out next to that container, or the system for picking up that garbage, you'll have to get a sticker. I mean, this is just one example of other communities, of ways that you can make sure that people can't just, well, I've got my container, but I've got more garbage than will fit in this container, I'm going to just set it alongside. I think it would be best if I... I think it would be best if I defer to Bob to answer those questions, but we, we're anticipating lots of issues like that, not from, certainly not the, from the bulk of, of people, but there will be those instances that we need to figure out, how do we make sure that we charge for those extra bags that weren't able to fit in?
To respond to that question, which is a very good question, is that you have to have strong ordinances on litter and dumping in bargeages and so on and so forth, which I think you already have in place. And so, you're going to have to police those. But as far as the container size, say as an example, a 32, a 64 and a 96, which is kind of standard. Say somebody says, "Hey, I only need a 32 gallon container." And so, that's a much lower price. And then they decide that we're going to not, either fill it way too full so it doesn't close, well, you don't pick those wastes up and you go knock on their door and leave a note that you won't pick the waste up if that has that. A second thing that you do is, as Jean was saying, you, if you want to go out and buy a 30 gallon bag, black bag for a garbage bag and you have to buy a sticker, Austin does it this way where I'm from, you buy a sticker for $4. Well, they won't pick that up unless that bag has that sticker on there. And if you really, so that's $4 for that. And so, then if you don't put a bag, put a sticker on there, you're just going to be belligerent and just buy a 30 gallon bag and put it alongside. They don't charge you $4, they charge you double that, they charge you $8. And so, this is how you get more enforcement on that. And people get tired of trying to come out, drag a bag and have to go and get a sticker and so on and so forth. So, they will be self-regulating in many ways as terms of the size of the container. Graduated fees based on graduated sizes of containers is much more difficult to bill and so you have to have a, a better system in place. But it's still, it's more equitable from the standpoint of a person having one bag of waste a week and so on and so forth, that's the attempt to do that. Did I answer your question?
It does, but then to, to the end of that though, where are we, we're obviously going to have to set up an ordinance or something that if you don't pay it, you know, the answer is I'm not going to pick up your garbage, won't work. So, does it go on your tax rolls or, you know, that kind of thing? The end result of, in, in, I'm thinking that we've got a lot of rental units, so we're going to have some complication with rental units as to whose garbage can is what. I can remember a long time ago, we had our numbers right on our garbage cans, you know, and you were responsible for that. I think I still got numbers on mine.
Yeah, they often put serial numbers on them.
Yeah, so, number one, you're going to have to have more manpower. So, we got to figure in the cost for stuff like that, more administrative costs. And in the end result, if we end up with a bunch of delinquent taxes because of it, that's going to be Patty's, part of this with the education that we, we need to get out and we need to get out often and we need to get out simple as to how this will work. We did this with recycling, what, five years ago? And some of us, including myself, struggled with the recycling. Now, it's turned out to be a very good program in, in my opinion. So, it'll take time. And as I said in our discussion today, the, the one fear that I have is one word and it's the word 20. When you look at people with an average, medium income of less than $40,000 in the city of Superior or so.
And I think that's, Jean, and we discussed that to a great extent, our discussions today and earlier than that. And I think that the whole idea, if you shoot for a target of average fee of 1750 or 17, whatever, 1750 say, and then you have a smaller container which is $14 or $12 or whatever the case may be, you have to, you're going to have to do some work on this. And then the larger container which you have out there now, which would be $23 or something like that, with the average coming out at 1750, then you've solved that, that, a major problem in that sense. And so, but it's shooting for a, a, a target of 1750. And we are not sure yet of how the breakdown would occur on how many want the smaller bags, how many want the middle-sized bags and how many want the large bags. And what they've done in many cities is they roll us out on a pilot study. And so, they start in a particular neighborhood and then move around with that neighborhood, move it around after that and to see how, take the bugs out of that. But there's an awful lot of experience with pay-as-you-throw. Pay-as-you-throw has been around a long time and it is an instrument that's used for encouraging recycling, has been very effective at that. So, I think that we have enough expertise out there in the, in the real world and enough examples of things that have been done and done well, that we're not going to reinvent the wheel. We're going to learn by my experiences and whatever else that we can bring about as far as helping us make sure we do it right.
And that's why I was trying to negotiate with you today. See, that was, that was part of the whole deal. But thank you again for everything you've done and, and very much so your expertise in this field. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown was next and then Counselor McDonald.
Yeah. Thanks for coming, Dr. Larson, I really appreciate it. The $20 or whatever the fee winds up to be, you know, all it does is, is putting another hardship on all of our residents, you know, and it's just, you know, it's the state, they keep dumping everything on us and, and we just, I know so many people in Superior can't afford this and it's really going to be a hardship on a lot of families. But what I'm looking at is, is anybody, do you know anyplace else in the United States that looked as garbage as a product? And the reason I bring that up and you may know about it, in Arkansas, and I forget the, I forget the professor's name down there, I found a bug, that you take your garbage and you burn it and you bring it up to 2,700 degrees and then you cool it off and it makes thin gas, they call it. And this bug eats this thin gas and excretes ethanol. And I went with Jeff Foster and some other people down to Arkansas and looked at the plant they had down there. And we talked to, well, it was Murphy Oil at that time and these plants would produce, the sized plants they had then would produce about 30,000 gallons of ethanol a month, I believe it was. Murphy Oil would have bought every drop that we could produce. It costs $30 million for one of these plants. Duluth and Superior produced enough garbage to have two of these plants here where they could have produced 60,000 gallons of ethanol a month. And would have took every drop of garbage between Duluth and Superior to fuel these. And also for Jeff Foster Trucking Company, it would have brought added revenue for him because they would have been able to haul waste back to Superior instead of his trucks coming back empty all the time. So, it was such a win-win idea, but whatever happened to it, I don't know. And I, I just think that we need, you know, we probably have to do this for the short term, but I think we ought to be looking down the road for the long term and garbage should be making money for Superior, not costing money for Superior.
Garbage is really becoming viewed upon as a resource rather than a negative value. And so, I don't want to discourage anything by this fee in that maybe in interim, but while you're doing that, you're working on pyrolytic converters, pyrolysis, plasma arc technologies and so on. There's a lot of technologies out there which some of them are proven, some of them are working, some of them not working so well, some of them having problems over time and so on. So, the, I, I think this is something that you need now based on your situation, but I surely think that you have enough waste that's accumulated between the two communities here and the district over there and the city here, but look at that. And, you know, as you say, you went down to Arkansas, there's, there, there are plants all over. Union Carbide spent a fortune on pyrolytic conversion and it, it didn't pan out for them. They just couldn't produce enough to make it feasible. But that's a long time ago, so times have changed and we need to look at those technologies. I do not want to look at length, or look at waste as, as a negative value. It really has a positive value. And we're going back and mining that, we're getting methane out of landfills now. We're doing a lot more in terms of recovery and recycling than we've ever done historically. When I started teaching this 40 years ago, there was garbage trucks with people laying on top of all the waste on open dump trucks going to the landfill, you know, leaving a trail, you could find a landfill very easily. And we've changed a lot and we are changing and that's positive and I don't want to discourage that positive move. And I don't think this does. This fee is, is a necessary fee based on the economic and fiscal situation of the city currently.
So, I really encourage our city administration to, to be looking at, at, at the future and what we can do with this to turn this into a positive thing for the city of Superior. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald?
Hi, I'll make this short. You kind of touched on it already, Dr. Larson. My issue is if we have these adjustable rates, we're not going to make the money that we need to because we're going to have more people going for the smaller amount of garbages. How are we going to pick up the difference there if we don't have a general fee of 1750 or 20?
The, I think you're going to find that some people are going to need larger containers and you will have to figure that out, how many of the smaller containers are going to be there. But there's a penalty associated with a smaller container that if you can't close the lid, you have problems. If you have to put a bag alongside that, you have an extra cost and then you have to go to the store or to the city hall here and get that and so on and so forth. It becomes inconvenient. So, people will adjust that and they'll do the other way. They'll start with a larger container and say they have downsized because they'll get into more recycling and that's one of the things that you have. So, we're suggesting a fee of 1750 on average fee, so you're going to have to blend that in as far as how many are going to be 95, 96 gallon, how many are going to be 64 and how many are going to be 32. And then you take those into account and that's how you determine that 1750 and by placing a value on each one of those graduated containers. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. It's okay. Thanks.
Any other counselors have anything else? I, I saw Counselor Eric smiling, but I couldn't tell if he had his light on or not. Well, like I mentioned at the beginning, most of my questions have been answered except I had a, I had a, a couple that weren't answered. What does Janesville do?
Janesville, we were trying to find out, do you have any more information on that? Janesville?
I can comment on, on that a little bit. They, I believe it was just within the last couple of months here, they automated their pickup system in, in Janesville. And I believe they, they gave everybody a 65 gallon cart to start out with and are adjusting from there. But I mean, like I said, it may have been the first of the year now that they, they rolled it out, but I mean, it's been within the, you know, past six months for sure.
So, you don't know what type of fee is associated with that then?
Well, like we said, they, they also have a landfill quite a bit larger than ours and it does help pay for the, the garbage service. The fee that they rolled out was $58 a year for the residents.
Five bucks a month?
Yeah, it was like $4.83 or something like that.
Yeah. Okay. And then I've already run this by Jeff Getzman, but just for comparison, how much, how much do you pay in Duluth, if you don't mind saying?
Yeah, it was $34 a month for 64 gallons and then bi-weekly recycling.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it's, it's good to have that information, be able to make a comparison. Just a couple other quick things here. One was, one of the slides here, it talked about the good things as far as, the many good things as far as our landfill, that it wasn't a bad odor, that, and that it wasn't near that. And one thing it said, it doesn't have an aesthetic impact, but I, I know that people from Duluth are able to see it and they think it looks like a big pyramid. And, so I just, I just thought I should, I should comment on that. And Counselor Olson had mentioned about education and education is, is important and the most important thing about education is repetition. It's got to be, it's got to be repeated in order to be able to remember that and that's, that's the same on, on anything, including what we're going to talk about as far as this goes. And then the last, the last one that I would have, and I don't know if this is a, a good analogy or not, but recently reading the Rotarian magazine, one of our, one of our meaning rotary's initiatives is getting rid of polio in, in the world. And it, and it's almost to that, they always say it's, it's this close. But one thing that they said, said in there, if, if you, if you're really interested in this and you wanted to pledge a certain amount a month, and what it had there was, it, it had, had the pizza analogy. And so, when we think about that, whether it's, depending on where you get your pizza from, but it would be about the equivalent of one pizza, one good pizza a month. So, I guess we would have to say that. So, that, those were all of, all of the other comments and other questions that weren't answered before. So, you know what? Oh, the mayor has comments.
Back to Janesville a little bit. Janesville was one of the, one of the issues, as I recall, back when I lived south. It's a large landfill and they were, we have one major contract, WSSD, they have stuff coming in from all over, which very much helps manage the cost of operations of that landfill versus what we experienced here and others. So, being close to the border, I should know, it's only 20 miles from the border, something like that, they were getting a lot of material from other areas which helped manage that cost.
Sure, sure. Okay, well, the only other thing that I would have to say before entertaining a motion to adjourn is again, thank you to Dr. Larson. Did you have any closing comments?
I, I just have one comment related to Janesville. If their fee is $4.83, they must not be paying that $13 DNR fee. So, there's something, something amiss.
That would be something good to check on.
Something amiss. So, I, so I can't see $4.83 being a possibility for collection and for recycling and for transport and for disposal. There's something wrong.
Okay, well, well, thank you again for all your expertise and all your input. We went to the right source for that.
Thank you very, thank you very much. It's been my pleasure.
Okay, and the mayor want to add another comment?
One more comment. What we will do, if it pleases the council, we will do our public information meetings and then report back to you at the second meeting in July.
Okay. Okay. Okay, motion?
Could I make one? No.
Okay. Patty, why don't you move up to the microphone?
I don't really need a microphone.
Well, you do for those six people who are watching at home.
The one closing comment I'd like to make to the counselors is that in our, our preparation of this, we decided that you are going to need ammunition, you're going to need some talking points for your constituents, for the phone calls that you're going to be getting, stopped in the stores and everything like that. So, in, in the next few days, as you either come up with more questions that you don't already have the information for, I think we'd like to use Ronnie's email address as our centralized point for you to ship those questions or comments back from any of your constituents so that if the staff needs to do some more homework or get some more information ready for you, then we'll get them in a concise package that you all will get. So, we want to be able to use that as a part. You're the ones that are going to be a, a big part of this, this education process also. I mean, we can produce brochures and distribute them and do presentations, but you all know that the ones that are going to be against this are going to be the ones that are going to talk to you. So, this is, this is a tough job you have to do, but we want you to have the accurate information to be able to dispense to the people that you represent. you represent.
Thank you, Patty. So, all in favor of, oh, Counselor Olson?
I just want to let you know, Patty, that I've been entered into the City Council Protection Program in Austin, Texas.
All in favor? Anyone opposed?